Thank you and have a seat, please. Moving on to roll call.
All right. Ron Knuff is absent. Kenneth Hall is absent. Bonnie Omen.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ron Glassick.
Here.
Judith Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Here.
Judy Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Tony Pristad.
Present.
And Mason Small.
Present.
Thank you, item number three on your agenda. Hearing a person present. If you would like to say something, come up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
I'm not a public speaker, so just to heads up.
Well, there you go.
Perfect time, all right. My name's Kyle Walbert, I live at one twelve Jeffrey Lane. Um, on that corner of Jeffrey Lane, I'm one of the closest houses to the Triboro Range. Never had an incident with the range or with a rogue bullet on my property, but a bunch of my neighbors unfortunately can't say the same. I want to make it clear, I'm by no means anti-gun range. I am, however, anti-finding bullets around the properties, along with bullets hitting vehicles, houses, and other things around the neighborhood. I grew up next to U N A M E Gun Club in E Mass, and not once did we find a bullet in our neighborhood when I lived there. Here are a few of my experiences. This past summer, my wife, kids, and I were coming home from lunch. We made the turn onto Jeffrey Lane to see two North Hampton cop cars parked in front of our house, and walking down my connector side yard at one ten Jeffrey Lane. We parked and went inside and quickly went out back to the deck to see what was going on. They were looking at the side of their house, right above their living room window, where a bullet struck their side and made a small hole feet away from the living room window, where it could have entered the living room. That alone is scary. Just this past October thirteenth, twenty twenty four, my family and I were sitting out back watching football on our patio. The typical everyday shooting was going on, and then all of a sudden, automatic weapons started flying around. I let it go for a few minutes, but then decided to call the Triboro at two oh four in the afternoon. A lady, whom I'm assuming is a bartender, answered the phone. I asked her if Triboro allowed automatic weapons to be fired at the range, and she responded with something along the lines of, what do you mean? I asked the same questions again, and got the same answer. I was then told to hang on, and a gentleman jumped on the phone and asked what I needed. I asked him the same question, and told him if it doesn't stop, I'm calling the police, in which answer I got was basically F off, and then I hung up. The shooting stopped, so I give him credit, because somebody went down there to stop what was going on. But it took me to call to get them to enforce their own policies and rules, which shouldn't happen. Why did a phone call to Triboro correct this? It's clear some members are not following the rules, but even more evident, the Triboro has very minimal oversight and control with what actually goes on at the range. Sorry. This past Saturday, a bullet hit a vehicle up on Frank Drive as a family was getting in the car. If it's somebody getting physically hit by a bullet, going to be a breaking point for somebody to finally step in and do something about this problem. I realize the range was there first, however, North Hampton Borough, back in the day, approved a development with a hundred and sixteen houses to be built directly parallel on downrange from Triboro. Who's at fault here? The police department is doing everything they can on their end, and we're very understanding when I talked to them a few weeks ago, when they were at another incident a few houses down from my house, when a neighbor was in her backyard and bullets were flying over her head as she was doing yard work. There have been any, many other reports made to the police department over the years, and I encourage my fellow neighbors to tell their stories tonight. I was shocked to find out that our neighborhood Facebook page, which was started sometime back around twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, that there were reports back then with bullets flying in our neighborhood. It's clearly an ongoing problem, so what is going to be done about it? I implore you, Borough Council, to do something about this before somebody gets hurt, or even worse, killed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I also live in his neighborhood too.
What is your name, sir?
Uh, my name's Adam Gloss.
Adam Gloss.
With a bunch of these people too. Um, about two years ago, I had a bullet on my patio while I had a party, and I live on Jeffrey. So if you can, I don't know if you know where Jeffrey and Frank is, I know you've probably heard about it on the news, but the way the development is, it looks like a NASCAR track, okay? I'm in the bottom corner, that's Jeffrey. The top one's Frank. Back here is the range. So for that bullet to get to Ange Gregory's house on Frank, that went past a whole street, past like twelve, fourteen houses. I mean, that is completely ridiculous. Um, so I had a party, I found the bullet there, and the bullet literally is the exact picture, the exact same one as I seen in the picture, sorry. I called the police, they came, and I tried to keep it hush-hustle, just me and the one dad went to the front, and then wanted everyone to panic, I didn't even tell my wife. We went out front with the bullet, and I said, hey, I said, to the cop, you know, let me know, I, I, I carry, I'm a gun owner, I, I have license to carry, I can see a weapon. I said, uh, I know that every, I know it was nine millimeter. And I said, uh, every handgun has a rifling, you, it's a fingerprint, you can find out who that is. And I said to him, well, let me know in a couple of days when you find out you know who it is. And he goes, ah, I don't even know if we're gonna run it. But it's the same one, it's the same bullet. And then they, they even told me that it might just be someone walking the tracks. How could it be someone walking the tracks when they just, this happens like fifteen times, twenty times? It's obviously the gun range. And to tell you the truth, I'm a member there, I try bro, I shoot there, my kids fish there. Um, I love it there. Uh, it does look like it's somewhat in order, um, they do have a camera up. Um, I just, I just don't understand, but I even have a hole in the side of my house from a bullet. Plus, I found on my patio, I have three little boys under thirteen, and I'll tell you right now, if, if something ever happens, then, I mean, it's gonna be a major lawsuit. I mean, I, I just can't believe that we're, we're just, and then, so I got an email from Triboro this week. And excuse my French, the email was entitled, F around and find out. So I was like, what the hell? So I opened it up, but it was actually to their members, like, don't F around. It was, uh, they said, you know, about the behavior at the range, no gas, they made all these new rules. But, I mean, I just don't understand how thi- this can just keep going on with chill, like, our, our neighborhood fills a bus. The bus literally has one hour stop besides our neighborhood. That's how many kids are there. So I mean, that's, that's gonna be good, you know, publicity when one of them get hit with a bullet for North Hampton. And I coach football, I coached lacrosse, I coached basketball, and baseball. Um, I don't want that for our town, you know, and I'm a member there too, I mean, maybe someone has to do something. This is crazy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gross. Anyone else? Can I, uh, Serge, come to the microphone, please? State your name, please.
Hi, everyone. My name's Yusuf Ibrahim. I live, uh, on Frank Drive. If everybody'd like, I can give you guys a response from the range. I thought it was fair, because obviously they're taking this pretty seriously. Now, for the record, was the ridge there before the range? Probably not. But this is pretty serious, right? I mean, your kids are outside, and there's a bullet on the lawn. You guys are lucky, like, could have been Fox, ABC outside if someone gets hit. I don't think you want that type of publicity in the borough, am I right? So, their response, just for everyone's knowledge, good evening, it says important shooting range information. We are glad the subject line got your attention. Unfortunately, is apparent that we have some assholes that do not understand proper range etiquette. We're having trouble using the ranges safely. We have had two incidents over the last month of bullets flying through and landing in the neighborhood adjacent to our range. Through investigations with North Hampton County detectives, the local police department, and state police over past several years, they have determined our range to be safe while recommending certain things that we can do to enhance safety and security. That being said, the only explanation for these incidents is people acting irresponsibly on the ranges. There's no room for this on our range, or any range for that matter. We believe both of these incidents are a result of shooting a firearm in the air or at something other than targets on the backstops. You can see the W F M Z report here, I can assure you, over the next days, weeks, months, and years, we will be required to attend meetings, listen to recommendations, and come up with plans to enhance security and safety on our ranges. Rightfully so, because we too believe that safety needs to be at the forefront of our range experience. Well said. And we also look to be good neighbors. However, future changes and enhancements will bring pain to all of our members and range users, as future changes will only be more costly and time-consuming for all involved. In the meantime, anyone found to be violating range rules will be barred from Triboro Sportsman for life and referred to the police department for prosecution. Make sure you sign in. I think that's pretty important. I thought it was a good corrective action. I just want the public to be aware that they are taking this seriously. But is signing in, root cause identification, do you think that's enough for Bakappa? Me personally, no.
No one signed in, but I signed in there, the last one was like three months before that, the one time.
Let's reiterate, I don't think anybody here is anti-gun, correct? We, we stand up for our rights, our constitutional rights.
Okay, so what's your name again?
Yusuf Ibrahim.
Ibrahim, okay.
We are not anti-gun, but what we are, pro-safety, that's all I'm saying. Don't label me a liberal, I'm not. But I'm here to tell you, right now, we gotta do more. Before you guys have ABC, Fox News, someone gets hit, I'm telling you, it won't be W F M Z only. Just think about your borough here, just think about that type of publicity. You guys are our leaders, we look to you for change. So, I'm good with this. I'm, I'm glad that they responded, but I think we gotta come up here and come up with better corrective actions. I could fundraise, I could do what it takes. You can get a building created, actual shooting range. Indoor shooting range, or you can go up the hill, take a look at a professional shooting range. It's top of the notch safety. Safety should be your number one core value. Start this meeting with the pledge, start this meeting with safety, debrief. That should be the number one core value here. So, I'm just here to say, I agree with the range, you address it in a timely manner, but it needs to be, uh, a bit more hard corrective actions, things that could actually improve safety, so that it's not just a bullet hitting a car, because I, I guarantee it hits someone, someone's losing their job on this council, I'm telling you. That's really how America works. So, just here, I know I seem concerned, but I'm just standing up for my neighborhood. We lived there, I've been there since two thousand seventeen. It's a great neighborhood. People stand up for what's right. Don't label them on any side of the spectrum. Just label them that they care about their neighbors and that they care about safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just kind of brought together, like, a listing of all the stuff that, um, was written on our.
May I have your name, please?
Sorry, Andrea Fritz.
Andrea Fritz?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, our neighborhood is very close, and we look out for each other, so we have a, I'll, here's the listing.
Thank you.
Um, so, as mentioned, our neighborhood is very close, and we look out for each other. Um, so we do have a Facebook page, and we use it kind of as a mini crime watch. Um, just to look out for each other. Just recently, we know that there's a lot of break-ins with cars, we let each other know. So the same thing is, you know, happening with the bullets. Every once in a while, a couple months will by, you hear anybody find another bullet into their yard or their house. Um, and it's strange, when I moved here with my husband in two thousand thirteen, um, we moved in, we saw the house once, we said, oh, this is great, we can't wait to move in. We move in, all of a sudden, it was the first time we noticed the gun range, and honest to God, it wasn't disclosed to us by the realtor. Um, and I don't know, maybe it would have changed my mind, had I known that. Um, but it becomes very noticeable once you do hear it, when you're not used to it. Now, I'm very used to it. But, um, with that being said, um, you shouldn't be used to seeing all the bullets around. Um, and I can honestly say, a majority of my neighbors live on this side of, um, Jeffrey that sees more of the bullets, and I thought, I feel for them. I don't know if I, if I had a house there, I would stay. But, and not to say that I was ever safe, but the one that happened two weeks ago, my two sons play on the side, right there. And it really upset me. Um, and I thought about even bringing them here today, because I'm just like, how can you, um, you know, ignore that? People's lives are, you know, in danger, so I just implore you to really consider all the evidence. I wish we could run a full police report, because I'm curious to know how many instances that the police received from everyone else. Um, I know I had something else to say, but it left my mind, so apologies. Um, that's it.
Thank, very good, Andrea. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Gino Mercadante. I live at one oh two Frank Drive. Um, my thing is, is, as everybody's been saying, got the rules and regulations, a lot of kids in the neighborhood. Imagine you guys living in our neighborhood, and your kids are there, and you find these bullets either dinging off your door, dinging off the side of the house, or whatever it may be. Is there any follow-up? Can there be any follow-up to their letter back to us? Can they go and check, see if they have a sign? See if there's somebody manning that station out, when it's always open? Because you never know, if anybody can just come in and somebody's following them, that's not a member. Is there anybody coming from the outside in? Okay, coming off the tracks, or whatever it may be, that shouldn't be there. Okay, that's the other question I have there. Because if it's not monitored and manned, all they have to do is sign in, no matter what. Who's mon, as Adam said, you know, there's not, and then he, he signed in like three months ago, and that was it. You know, so anybody can come and go, which is not right. And then, as he said with the rapid fires, you hear shotguns, all this rules and regulations that they have, some are not followed until you hear it, until somebody calls about it. You know, sometimes I'll be sitting in the backyard and just hear it rattling off, and it's loud. And sometimes I have family over there, like, what is that? I'm like, it's gun range, right, being right in the backyard. Now, I know that it's adjacent to the river, but to be over here, to go like this, that's, it's impossible. So that means they're either, like, like he said, they're either shooting in the air, trying to shoot something, maybe that's in the woods, in the trees, or whatever it may be, and they're, they're aiming high, and it's missing. So that's where it's coming in. And we have a lot of kids, like I said, a lot of buses. My son was walking, our dog, literally twenty minutes before that happened. Now, can you imagine if he was walking across the street and that hit him, crossfire? I, I, that'd be, like Adam said, that'd be it. But it literally happened twenty minutes before he walked that dog. So, if there's any way to follow up, have somebody do an inspection, a pop-up inspection, out of the blue. That would be great, just to make sure that they're doing what they say they're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Uh, Christopher Bodnar, Vice President, Triboro. Um, I appreciate all the comments tonight. Uh, the last thing that I obviously want to do is have anybody get hurt. Um, the second last thing I want to do is be here, because something's going on. Um, and, yeah, that email, safety's at the forefront of our, you know, it's, we're, we're trying to be as safe as we can. Can we do better? Is it perfect? Absolutely not. You know, you set a roof, that'd be great. If I could come up with the money to put a roof on it tomorrow, I'd put a roof on it tomorrow. Um, you know, over the years, we have taken recommendations, uh, you know, the email alluded to investigation by North Hampton County. Um, you know, when they came down, the banks, the, the, uh, range banks were a little low. Um, they were sufficient for what they suggested, but at the time, we were adding dirt, and they said, just keep adding dirt to it. Um, you know, so, we did, we added approximately ten thousand tons of dirt behind that range. Um, we have intentions of continuing that this summer. Um, unfortunately, I don't think that's going to stop people shooting in the air and bullets landing on your house, your cars, or driveways, or lawns. Um, we installed cameras at the suggestions of the police department and, uh, council here. Um, so, when I do know of the events happening, I can pull it up, and I can see who's there. Uh, we have, uh, cameras on the, uh, on the parking lot, so that we can see license plates. Um, so, even if they do not sign in, we can identify who's there. Um, you know, the signings were added a couple of years ago, again, at the suggestions of, uh, police department and county. Um, so, and just recently, after this, this last incident yesterday, actually, we hung signs up, uh, for people, members, if they are shooting up there and they see something, to say something. Um, you know, we always, have always suggested that if they see somebody misbehaving on the range, say something to them, but obviously, people don't want to do that, they don't want to, um, you know, get into a confrontation. So, there's now QR codes up there, they can simply scan it, um, and it sends a form directly to me. Um, it has my phone number on there, it has Triboro's phone number. Um, but, you know, it's just another, hopefully a layer to catch people. Um, and as that email said, we'd love to catch them, we'd love to throw them out, we'd love to prosecute them. There's no room for, there's no room for that nonsense. Um, so, the future.
When the bullets are, are shown, like, we're handing the bullets to the police officers. There's a fingerprint to every, every handgun. That bullet, they, no, you run, you know instantly. You would get a call too, you would know the method. Like, why, so there's some disconnect here? I know the police shoot there.
Who authorizes, who authorizes a gun range?
What's that?
Who approves a gun range? When you set that gun range up, okay? Who comes in and inspects it and says it's okay?
Uh, that gun range was set up forty-three years ago, so.
Well, okay, so it's time to bring in the state and have them look at it?
Yeah, but still, but still, where the neighborhood was, that was zoned, that, that was obviously zoned as a, you know, residential, wasn't zoned as commercial.
But I'm saying, is it an authorized gun range?
Does it meet the standards of whatever the state has?
Yes.
Whatever guidelines the state has, does the range meet the, the minimum standards?
And I'd have no problem.
Soon they would be inspected.
Yeah, I have no problem, no problem with anybody coming in and inspecting. Like I said, um, you know, there was an incident a couple of years ago, a bullet strike on a, on a house, state police came in, um, and they basically, they determined that there's no way that that bullet came from the range, just because of where it was located and.
If you look on the map, there, there's a three hundred foot elevation actually, from, from the range to Frank Drive, where that was on the news the other day. So it does seem a little crazy, you know, I shoot guns, like, it seems a little crazy that, that, you know, it looks like a nine millimeter, if I'm not, if I'm not correct. Uh, so, I mean, for a nine millimeter to go three hundred yards, in, like, vertically up there, I mean, it's, it, but then, but you get this bullshit that, it's like, oh, it's someone on the track, someone on the track, someone on the track, come on, man. Like, what are the chances, like, someone on the track just shoots twenty times to an area?
I argued with the guy.
You hear him going through the leaves, like, all you guys up here, imagine having a picnic, and hearing bullets go through your leaves.
Chris, can I ask you?
Yes.
What is the information that you require on the signing sheet?
Direct our questions to him.
I'm sorry, um, yeah, so, uh, on the signing sheet, it's name, um, I believe, it is, does it include membership number? And.
Membership number.
Membership, time in, time out.
So you don't require a license plate? Make a model of what gun they're bringing with them to shoot?
Nope.
That might be a good idea, so you can match it up if the bullets are found?
I mean, that's certainly something we can add. I just know, I know that a lot of them will shoot multiple guns, and that's something that we'd certainly add.
So, what is your position at Triboro?
Vice President.
Pardon?
Vice President.
Okay, and Chris, what was your last name?
Bodnar.
I think maybe we need someone to come in and look at that gun range.
I'd be perfectly fine.
Is there somebody watching and monitoring it all?
The cameras?
Not cameras.
No, no, there's not somebody.
So you need to talk at the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Chris, has there ever been any formal discussions for any more guns to be built?
Sir, please, it's his turn.
So, I'm sorry. After the meeting, you can.
After the meeting, you may talk to one another.
I will, I'm, my phone number's out there, my phone number's on the website. I have no problem talking to anybody. Um, that, uh, complaint link is also on the website now, it's triborosportsman.com.
But you didn't stop anyone else?
Well, sir, um, um, right, it got out of hand, so I had to, thank you.
Um, but, yeah, if you, I mean, that, it's anonymous, so you don't have to put your name in there, it doesn't require an email. You can put your name and phone number in there, so I can call you back. I certainly welcome that, so I can get more information. But, uh, you know, my phone number's there, I will gladly answer any questions. I have a full-time job as well, so, if I don't answer, I'll call you back. Okay?
Let me bring counsel up to date with the police department's in- involvement here. Uh, the chief has been in touch with me, we've talked about this many times, uh, we met with Triboro, uh, management a while back, and they have been very responsive to the suggestions. As Chris said, the berm has been raised, they have signed in, they put cameras in, it was recommended. Uh, this is an ongoing investigation from the police department standpoint, where we have to follow the evidence. And the police have followed the evidence, and they continue to do that with the cooperation of Triboro. So we're very happy about that, no one's stonewalling any of the investigation, we're moving ahead as best as we can. We have a detective who is on this, and he is doing investigations also. There is concern that there may be people shooting in the woods illegally. We have that to think about also, and officers have actually gone into the woods to take a look when they've been called up there on the report of gunfire. They have found nothing, but they will continue to keep investigating it, and we will be on top of this. The borough is not shrugging any of our responsibilities. Everyone here is concerned, I can say that for sure. And we will continue to investigate this, and our police department will be on top of this to the best of their abilities. If we need to bring in additional help on the state level or any other level, we will certainly do that with, uh, you in mind, uh, to communicate that with you. A few months back, I had a meeting at Jamie Horwitz's house. Uh, there are some of you might have been at that meeting, and we discussed it, and Jamie's kind of been my point person up there, just to get a feel of how things are going, and then when I do here, I, I do let the chief know, and, and we do have patrols up there. So, unfortunately, this keeps happening. Okay, so we do have to up whatever we're doing to make sure that this doesn't keep happening. And I know Triboro's working hand-in-hand with the borough and our police department to make sure it stops happening. So, if there's any questions, you can easily find me, most of you know where to reach me, so you can go from there. Thank you.
And I just have one more comment, Andrea, I took offense a little bit, I don't know what word you used anymore, that we weren't taking this seriously enough as council, or we were ignorant to what's going on. My family, my grandchildren, my grandchildren live at Michael Court, which is, and they ride the school bus with your children. So I am on your side with this, I hear you, and I'm concerned that, just, just as much as you are.
I don't, I don't recall saying that at all, but, okay.
Can I mention something?
Yes.
And this is out of form that we normally do this way, but, Chris, I appreciate the, first of all, everybody's professionalism in coming here and talking about this, and thank God it's not for an incident of an injury or a death, even worse yet. Um, but, Chris, could we have updates on what's going on there, on like, maybe on a monthly basis even, or even on a weekly basis, report to the borough manager? In the, in the near future, for things going on, what, what you're doing, and what the signing sheets look like, or what, any kind of protection we're trying to do?
Yeah, I mean, I do, you guys tell me what you want, and I'll make sure that it's up.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm Wally. I don't live there, but I'm nosy. Okay, last time it was infected forty years ago?
No.
That's why it was.
It started forty, okay, so, that was, my opinion, it was a non-residential area, it was forty years ago, now it's a residence, residential area. Isn't somebody supposed to come every five or ten years from the state, federal, whatever, to make sure that it's safe and it's not dangerous? You didn't, you didn't look into that or anything like that?
Ms. Ms. Lee, you're supposed to adjust.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I thought it was him.
No, you can't, that's after the meeting.
You can go outside and discuss anything afterwards.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
I know it'll take too much of the time, because the clock is running. I'm, uh, my name is Dable Conia. Um, I'm retired law enforcement, also retired in the military. And from what I'm hearing now, um, the place has been up for forty years. A lot of things have changed within those forty years. Uh, it's been brought to the attention of the local police department. Um, I don't know if they have people working undercover, checking it out, or going there in uniform, or anything like that. And it's not to, um, ridicule anybody, either on the borough or on the, uh, police department side of the house, but this is something that should have been, uh, after a while. I mean, I don't know if this is the first time they're complaining about this, or whatever, but I think there's something ATF may have to get involved, because
Yes.
From the time that he built that, um, the range, or they built the range, things have changed. You know, you gotta get updates from ATF, you gotta get, you know, I'm sure those things happen, and, uh, I think if, uh, the borough, this is my opinion, the borough, if, if you guys feel that, uh, you don't have the amount of, uh, people here, or the right type of, uh, uh, investigation going on, it should go to someone higher, uh, like ATF, that specializes in stuff like this, and that will, uh, come to the local police departments and train them, and this is what to look for and to do, and this, that, and the other, before, you know, something real bad hurts, happens, you know, because it's, right now, as far as, we've, me and my wife have been coming here for over a year, almost two, almost now. And right now, they're putting it on record. So, to be forewarned is to be forearmed. And I, my suggestion would be to, uh, look into it a little bit further, and if need be, don't hesitate with getting ATF.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dave.
Okay.
Anyone else? In your orange shirt, you had something to say. Yes.
Madam President, thank you. My name's Tony Hill, I live on Jeffrey Lane. Um, I think I have seniority in the neighborhood, I've been there since two thousand one. We didn't have any houses down there, but like, three. We didn't have any houses down there, but like, three. Um, I'm really glad to see Triborough, they're very proactive, we're very proactive. Nobody wants to close this place down, they do great things down there. I always hear them having benefits and music and gun ranges and, you know, safety classes for the kids and fishing derbies and stuff like that. We just want, their community is our community, our community is their community, we just want to work together and be safe. I don't even hear the gun range anymore unless one goes sizzling over my head, uh, when I'm mowing the grass. It's happened a few times, nothing that I'm not used to, um, from my former career in New York City. Um, but, uh, I'm glad that we're addressing it here, and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of all my neighbors, we'd love to work with Triborough and come up with great, with some good solutions, and, uh, make everybody happy, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Moving on to item number five on your agenda. If you care to stay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Do you have, do you want something to say?
You want to say something?
I'm not with the gun range.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why not?
Hi, my name is Kathleen Holtzman, and I'm just here regarding, uh, handicap parking space in front of my residence.
Okay, then what would you like to say?
That I need to park, have our car parked in front of the house, because I'm very, with my knees and everything going up and down steps, and to go, I only have like, three steps to get to my, the car, and if we park somewhere, we have a garage in back, but that is like, a hundred feet and a lot of steps. And that's all I'm requesting, is a handicap spot in front of my residence. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consider the approval of agreement between the Borough of North Hampton and twelve forty-nine Newport Avenue LLC.
This indemnity agreement between Borough of North Hampton and twelve forty-nine Newport Avenue LLC is for interior building construction only.
You have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion because I have questions, as usual.
What, what was that, Judy?
I'll make a motion as I have questions, so.
Motion to approve by Ms. Holdeman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Or Mr. Glassick?
Thank you, Mr. Glassick.
Questions?
Mr. Glassick, do you have questions?
I do, but go ahead.
Um, so I, I think I'm just looking for some clarification, I tried to read this, but obviously I am far, far from an attorney. Um, this is to proceed with work before all the conditions have been met.
It's essentially one condition is holding it up, and that is the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, it's, it's, there's nothing particularly, um, that, that would lead us to think that they're not going to get their approvals, it just takes time, and so this agreement allows them to proceed with working on the inside of the building.
And I, are, are we allowed to ask what that condition, what the department, what we're waiting for on the Department of Environment, or we're not allowed to ask?
I think it's just, it's just normal permits that are associated, it takes a lot longer, yeah, yeah.
Just their, just their process.
The NPD has permit and, um, and they, they take a long time, so if you had to wait on those to start with the building inside, it would put your project back six months.
Yes, so there's nothing irregular, there's nothing unique about this.
And it's.
Anything that they're voted for, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, there's nothing unique about this particular project in terms of DEP approval, it's very, very standard, it just, it does take time, and so it would hamper, um, progress in terms of, you know, things that could be accomplished in the meantime.
But as they proceed, they'll continue to get inspected on what progress they're doing.
That's what this is.
All of this process will continue as is.
So the building permits are approved?
I saw that.
So this kind of allows the borough to issue the building permits without the DEP approval yet, so that way you could, we're not technically issuing it, because we're not actually giving the permits. This kind of allows them to do the work and get the inspections along with it.
But I do see that the workers' comp insurance paperwork has not been provided, which is something that apparently is mandatory, because it says required, but not received as of yet, so it's, is that another whole, like, that is?
Um, is that, was that in some of Dave's notes?
It's on page.
The workers' compensa- compensation insurance.
Proof of workers' compensation insurance, it's required, it has not been received, as the other sets of plans have been required and see checked off and dated, so that was not received as of yet?
That was as of last month.
Yeah, so he might have had it.
Okay, so this is not an updated form?
The, the, is the permitting side of it, that's, that's, uh, I'm not even sure which one, let me see, trying to find where that's written at.
Page four, five, six, say about page eight, then?
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay, I see it now, so it's not received yet, a- as of December, November sixth, it was not received, that's when he turned in the, the applications.
So this has been updated, and if we have received it?
I don't know, uh, but the workers' compensation insurance is relatively easy to get, I'm, 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 I would ninety-nine point nine percent safely say that they will have that. If not, it's a workers' compensation affidavit that's notarized. If, if a company does not have workers' comp on their insurance, if someone does do work in the borough for a building permit, they just get a notarized affidavit basically saying that they're not going to hire anybody that they need workers' comp.
I understand that, I just want to make sure all the boxes are checked, it's something that's required.
I will look into it, I'll find out for sure.
So let's make sure that we get it.
But, yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess the question would be, is that the denied satisfaction extension that you're looking at? It says denied.
So, uh, up top there, that's what Dave put on there for.
So, essentially, building permits are not going to issue until we get DEP approvals, so that is the purpose of this agreement.
Okay.
For them to be permitted to move forward with interior improvements, if you will, um, at their own risk. And there are, the, all of the provisions in the agreement protect the borough. To allow them to do that, they understand that it is at their own peril, because it is not permitted work formally.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but.
So, if I may, if the permits don't go through, for whatever reason, because usually they come back and ask more questions, and then more questions, and the process takes a long time, so this basically just covers us and you get that, they do the work, you don't get permitted, we're good, okay?
Yep, that's precisely it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider approval of the agreement between the Borough of North Hampton and First Regional Compost Authority.
The agreement between the Borough of North Hampton and First Regional Compost Authority is for yard waste composting services for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven.
Do I have a motion to approve the agreement? Between the borough and FRCA?
I need a motion.
Motion by Mr. Stone.
Second.
By Mr. Hall, questions?
Uh, yeah, free mulch, that, uh, for, for anyone to just come up there, is that fine?
It was.
That, that, I worked out when I saw free mulch, I'm like, ah.
It's free unless you want them to fill your trough.
Okay, so I can come up with a, okay.
You can fill, yeah, as long as you fill it up yourself, it's free.
All right, I'll free my pigs working in it.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider approval of agreement between the Borough of North Hampton, DRC Technologies.
This service contract between the Borough of North Hampton and DRC Technologies is effective from January twenty, twenty twenty-five until February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve, but then I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
And Ms. Holdeman? Questions?
What is DRC?
What does it stand for?
What is DRC Technologies?
It's the IT company on Main Street, is replacing Look First, who we had for a number of years, there's our IT company.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
But, we have one more question, is this for one year only?
Yes, they only do one year at a time.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request to attend a fire investiga- investigator certification course.
Chief Kadingo is requesting that Officer Joseph Britt attend a fire investigator certification course in Lower Bucks County from June second through June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, from eight AM to five PM. The cost of this course is nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
By Ms. Holdeman? Any other questions?
Question.
Go ahead, please.
I guess Chief Kadingo, is this not fall under the, uh, fire department?
No, the course, I had the same question initially, uh, the course is designated for law enforcement and fire personnel. So under the legal agreement, uh, asking how I know this, if there, if there is a provision that applies to law enforcement personnel, it applies.
Okay, do they know Chief, uh, Officer Britt is also the captain over at Coplo, correct?
Chief, actually.
Chief, okay, good, all right, well, thank you, that makes it, understanding why it was police, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider, consider request to attend an LEO firearms instructor course.
Chief Kadingo is requesting that Officer Robert Lindsay attend an LEO firearms instructor course in Boyertown, PA, at the Douglas Township Police Range from March tenth through March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the cost of the course is twelve hundred dollars.
I make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Holdeman?
Second.
And Mr. Donahue, questions?
I'll ask. LEO stands for what?
Law enforcement personnel.
Oh, that's easier, okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, so this is an, it's, this is, he'll become an instructor?
Yes.
So do we not have an instructor currently? We do.
This is, we actually have two instructors, uh, this is allowed under, be requested training in this police unit.
So he's a, he's a, one of our newest officers is, I guess I'm gonna then speak up and say, I hope this is just him stepping up to take on a, a, an advanced role here.
He will be correct, but we do, we do have two range officers, they'll make the range time a lot faster.
I don't understand that, oh, because they'll be supervised by three individuals who'll be watching them shoot?
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request to attend a duty handgun red dot instructor's course.
Chief Kadingo is requesting that Officer Robert Lindsay attend a duty handgun, handgun red dot instructor's course in Dallas, PA, at Iram Shrine Range on March seventeenth and eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, the cost of the course is five hundred dollars.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Glassick, second by Ms. Holdeman? All those in favor?
Questions?
Sorry, question?
It's a ditto question, but also, um, oh, the other part just went right out of my head, so we're good. Um, same type of concept again, this is, he's gonna be a trainer.
Yes, we do not currently have anybody that, fortunately with police work, everybody has to be certified for instruction, and the trend in law enforcement is towards optics on handheld weapons, and we don't have anybody that's certified, this would allow them to.
So this will be a new one. So is there, can I ask, is there a certain amount of hours per training per year?
Yes, there's three hours a year.
For, for a year?
And it accumulates to eighty hours.
Okay, thank you, end of my questions.
Any other questions?
So I'm just assuming that the red dot is like laser type training?
No, it's, it's basically an optic that is on the weapon, it doesn't project a laser, it has a red dot in it, uh, and it's sighted through the gun, so when you bring your weapon up, you put the dot on the person, rather than lining sights up, put the dot on the target, and it gets, it's greatly improved accuracy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number seven, consider the request for handicap parking space.
A resident in the area of the six hundred block of Washington Avenue is requesting a handicap parking space. As in your package, Chief Kadingo recommends rejection of this request.
What is the opinion of council on this?
Excuse me?
What?
Ma'am, pause that, the.
Splitting councils' votes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
The chief wanted a comment.
Do you want, go ahead.
After the vote, any questions?
Okay. Um. Question. What is your motion, opinion to approve or reject? Do I have a, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go with, uh, Chief's, uh, recommendations of rejecting, but I do have questions.
To reject?
Yeah, I don't even know if this is a recommendation.
Do I have a second to reject?
Second.
So.
Any questions?
Real quick, is this solely because of the, the ordinance, of the hundred feet from the garage, it's not?
I'm sorry, is your question to me?
Yes, I'm sorry, chief.
Yes.
It's rejected because of the hundred, the hundred feet?
My rejection is solely based on the language in the ordinance, uh, I have you to residents, and Mrs. Holtzman is correct, it would be downright treacherous for her to try to even make it down the back, even if she had a parking area, not a garage, uh, I just, I follow the wording in the ordinance, and at some point, council, along with their statement, can make evaluation.
But there are extenuating circumstances.
Yes, yes, there are.
Any other questions? All those in favor to reject?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
So how many is that? Can you take a roll there?
Sure.
To reject?
All right, so the motion is to go along with the police chief's recommendation to reject the parking, handicap parking space, so, uh, wrong enough, it's absent, Ken Hall.
The, so it's.
The, the motion is to go along with his recommendation and reject the handicap parking.
So if you want to reject it, you would say yay, and if you want, if you want to approve it, you would say nay?
Yay.
Okay. Uh, Bonnie Omen?
Yay, because the chief knows more than I do.
Trevor Stone?
Can we go back?
Yes, I don't think people will.
Because I don't think anybody truly understands, chief's recommendation is thrown solely because it's an ordinance of a hundred feet, because the garage is a hundred foot, a hundred feet.
Right.
But, he agrees with his treasurers, and it probably would not be his recommendation had it not been following the ordinance.
Correct. So by saying yay, we are saying that they will not get a handicap parking space?
It's opposite.
I understand that, but then we're not also following the ordinance.
Let me just.
But it's our discretion.
To be fair, the ordinance also specifies the decision can, is ultimately decided by council.
Precisely.
My position is only to gather the evidence and present a recommendation based on the law. Council has the authority, and it is perfectly allowed in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's absolutely a matter, a matter of your discretion, there are guidelines in the ordinance, but it is ultimately a matter of your discretion. but it is ultimately a matter of your discretion.
Okay, so, Ron Keneff is absent, so Ken.
I'm gonna change the name.
Nay.
Bonnie.
Ammon.
Bonnie.
Nay.
Trevor.
Nay.
Ron.
Nay.
Judy, hold on.
I'm gonna stick with my yay.
Okay. Jason.
Nay.
Judy Kutsa.
Nay.
So, the motion is defeated.
So, we can have a?
You can have a new motion.
We can have a new motion.
Correct.
Okay. The motion to approve the handicap parking spot at six hundred block of Washington Ave.
Make a motion to approve it.
To approve the handicap spot.
I'll second.
Any other questions?
Question.
Yes.
Just so we're all in, in, uh, aware, a handicap parking spot isn't for a sole person?
Yes.
Anybody can park there, so you could have, still have the same problem, but I'm just putting it out there so everybody, there, there, everybody's aware that it's always brought up, so just making a point.
Thank you for that point.
There you go.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, I'm just sticking to my guns and following the ordinance, I apologize, I'm happy you're winning, but I, I'll stick with what I've always done, thank you.
Thank you. Consider request for fire police assistance.
Uh, Lehigh Township is requesting fire police assistance for the Fireman Sportsman Night on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, starting at three PM. Times and further details will be provided for those who are available.
Are you okay with this, Mr. Hall?
As usual, we will do the best we can, we've been there for previous, previous years, uh, it's, we give them the help that we can.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this request?
I make a motion to approve the request.
By Miss Holtenman, second by?
Second.
And Mr. Donahue? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of the Greater Northampton area, area Chamber of Commerce. Miss Lam.
You skipped number thirteen.
I skipped number thirteen.
Exchange point, you skipped to thirteen, exchange point.
Yeah, I did, didn't I? Okay, let's do number thirteen. Consider request of the Northampton Exchange Club.
The Northampton Exchange Club is requesting permission to hold their annual Northampton Community Days Fair from Wednesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty five, through Saturday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Do I have a motion to approve this request?
Make a motion.
And Miss Holtenman, do I have a second?
Second.
And Miss Holtenman? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now, we'll talk about the Chamber of Commerce. Consider request of the Greater Northampton Area Chamber of Commerce.
The Greater Northampton Area Chamber of Commerce is requesting to hold their thirty-sixth Annual Uptown Street Fair on Saturday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty five. They're also requesting use of the portable van trailer and portable restroom. They'll be charged a rental fee of three hundred dollars, a delivery and setup fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, and be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured.
What is the opinion of council?
Make a motion to move forward with it.
Mr. Glassick? Make a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Stone? Any questions?
Question, I thought the hours were earlier than eleven to four, weren't they, did they start earlier?
They started earlier years ago, but they moved it to eleven to four now to accommodate more people coming from farther away to set up.
Okay, and also, second question or follow-up, is that for the portable bathrooms as well as the?
That, I mean, the approval was for both, but the charge is only for the van trailer. We've never set up a fee for portable bathrooms.
Really?
Really.
Stainless steel bathrooms with air conditioning?
Yep.
When it goes, when it goes with the van.
Which, when it goes with the van trailer, but even when we don't.
Some of them spinning right now when they're sharing.
Just follow that up, you know, we've, we've talked about that for years already, nobody's charging for it.
It's something that, it's something that we've talked about. The way that it's worded in the fees, it may, it, it may be construed as just the one, but I think there is a case that it can be for both of them. It's just the way that's worded in the permit fees, I believe.
They charge more because it's stainless steel or?
Air conditioning, that's the whole thing.
It's buy one, get one free.
The other one's falling apart.
It's something that we've talked about recently, that's something that we should probably look at about addressing.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider the request of the Nazareth Area Chamber of Commerce.
Nazareth Area Chamber of Commerce is requesting to use the portable van trailer for the following three events. The Nazareth Food Truck Festival on Saturday, June seventh, twenty twenty five, the Martin on Main Festival on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five, and the Nazareth Fall Festival on Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty five. For each event, they will be charged a rental fee of three hundred dollars, a delivery and setup fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, and will be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured.
The opinion of council?
I make a motion to honor the request.
Motion made by Miss Holtenman, do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Glassick, any questions?
I do, are we, are we moving forward with the meetings that we've had to determine if we're fixing it or?
We are, we are fixing it.
We are fixing, we've made that decision.
Yes, well, it's good to go, it's good to go after this year.
Who's fixing it, are we getting an update on that, we are doing it.
We are, we are.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of the City of Bethlehem.
The City of Bethlehem is requesting use of the portable van trailer for the Halloween Parade on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five. They'll be charged a rental fee of three hundred dollars, a delivery and setup fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, and will be required to provide a certificate of insurance naming the borough as additionally insured.
What is the opinion of council?
Make a motion for comment.
Mr. Glassick, second by?
Second.
And Mr. Stone? Questions?
Obviously, I think we need to look at our prices to increase this for next year, we could help a lot of things in the town, increasing the rate.
Agreed.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's crazy, the request for it, because we have one of the van shelter, our van trailers, we should be making more money on it to build, help our own town.
Any other questions?
It was more of a comment than a question, as far as.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, consider the request of the Northampton Kids Swim Club.
Northampton Kids Swim Club would like to conduct summer swim practices at the Northampton Borough Pool twice a week, on Monday and Wednesday mornings from eight AM to ten AM, starting in early June and ending the week of July twenty first. They'll be making a two hundred and fifty dollar donation to use the borough pool.
What is the opinion of council?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Miss Holtenman?
Second.
Second.
Glassick? Any questions?
Well, just a comment there too, so, there we're giving them the portable restroom again with no fees or anything, and this is.
No, this is, this is number, they're swished.
They were switched.
But I agree with you on your statement though for the next, I agree with you.
Alright, then, we'll move forward to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of Northampton Area School District.
Northampton Area School District is requesting to use the portable restroom for their tenth Annual Student Council Car Show on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five, from nine AM to three PM at Bicentennial Park West in East Allen Township.
Opinion of council?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Donahue?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall? Any questions?
Just the comment that I said previously.
Yes, and I, we agree with you, and that is what precipitated the review from us.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we're moving on to report school committees. And, I'm gonna start with Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
Administration.
Okay, go ahead, I was waiting for you a minute.
Yeah, obviously, okay. I have a short here.
Okay, we received the twenty, twenty twenty-four fourth quarter franchise fee from Service Electric in the amount of five thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventeen cents. There are two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-two live stream views on January sixteenth council meeting. As of Friday, uh, J- January thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, we received five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-six cents in garbage payments. Code Enforcement has officially moved their office into, moved into their new office at Borough's Administration Building. They are now located down the hall next to the Atlas Museum, end of report.
Thank you, building name of recreation, Miss Holtenman?
Thank you, the rec center will now be particip-, will, will now be a participating facility with fit on health. If you have either Highmark or Blue Cross Insurance, you may be eligible, contact the rec center for more information. Um, if I can interject there, we had some, a gentleman come in here and speak about that, and so, just be aware, because it was Silver Sneakers, now it's this, so people should be aware in terms of their insurance for, this is more of a senior coverage to, um, being able to utilize the rec center. Scheduling of appointments at the rec center for the preparation, for tax preparation began on Monday, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, it's a typo there, I'm catching it, I'm, since I'm a, a senior. End of, yeah, going backwards, end of report.
Thank you, Code and Police, Mr. Stone?
Yes, thank you, including the, uh, this year's trash bill is information reiterating proper procedure for placing trash and recycling outside of residents' homes, part of that information was reminder that all trash must be placed in a can with a lid. Uh, to date, we have received a total of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars in rental registration and inspection fees. We also received the Northampton Borough Police Department yearly report, uh, in that we had six thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven, uh, dispatches, one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven incident reports filed, and two hundred and fourteen accident investigations booked, end of report.
Thank you, Fire and Health, Mrs. Holtenman?
Thank you, the next Fire Department Breakfast will be held on Sunday, February sixteenth, at eight to eleven AM. The annual purse bingo will be held on Sunday, March thirtieth, doors open at eleven AM, and bingo starts at twelve thirty PM. Included in our package this evening is the monthly health officer's report and the minutes from the meeting that was held on January twenty-eighth. I just want to highlight a few of the bullet points, there was a consultation with the food service director for the Northampton Area School District following the inspection of the four public schools located in the borough, and all of the school food service operations were in compliance. They reviewed plans for the new Come and Eat restaurant located in the Cherryville Road Shopping Center, which is located in the site of the former Oriental Restaurant. And lastly, the Main Street Scholars Childcare Facility is continuing with plan review and renovations to their new site, end of report.
Thank you, Community Center, Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, the Community Center held their annual monthly meeting Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, January twenty-first, I'm sorry. The new outside doors have been delivered and will be installed once warmer weather has arrived. The kitchen's new oven has been installed and already has been put to good use, end of report.
Thank you, sir. Public Works and Sewer, Mr. Glassick?
Thank you, uh, over the last week, Public Works has been remodeling the old code enforcement office. Um, once completed, it will be the new detectives' office for the police department. Signs are being ordered for the height, height requirement on the Tenth Street Underpass, end of report.
Well, thank you, sir, we're moving on to reports from council members, starting with Mason, go ahead, sir.
Uh, yes, I'd just like to address two things, um, firstly, I'd just like to thank the Fire Department and all other supporting fire departments for helping with the fire, uh, a few days ago, uh, from very early until morning to very late at night, they were doing a great job and helped put it out. And I'd just like to also hope that a deal can be made that ensures the safety of our residents within the borough. That is all done.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Glassick?
Yeah, thank you, um, well said about the Fire Department and the police and EMS and all the supporting fire companies around for the large fire we had here, um, but we also had another fire up at the, the old firehouse up on Main Street. I mean, our Fire Department and EMS and the police have been working around the clock, it seems, I mean, we hear the more the fire trucks are going around every single night, so please be safe and things, and thank you for all the support that they have gotten from outside services, I think it's great to see that. And this last fire over here is just, was probably the worst thing we had in the, in the town in a long, long time, how big it was.
I do have a report on that, Mr. Glassick.
Um, Public Works, I thought you did a great job on the s- on the streets again, I know we had storms. We're gonna have a couple storms, it looks like it's gonna be a cycle for the next couple days. So, I know the hours that they put in and the, and the job that they do have been great, and you can't do a lot with ice, but they still did a great job in helping ours, you know, streets and being safe in our areas. Um, I thought the people that came here tonight, I mean, it was very professional, it was held very well. Thank you, Mr. Bodnar, and the whole Tri-Borough for taking a proactive approach to it, I thought it was outstanding. Um, I've seen your email go out, and I'm glad that gentleman read it. Um, I think we can all work together, I think the last gentleman had said it best, you know, to work together to make our community better, instead of just throwing stones at each other and trying to make, you know, finding fault, we have to find a way to make it better. So, thank you, everybody, for that. Um, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, I'm gonna echo what the last two gentlemen just said about the Fire Department, the police, EMS, all the surrounding agencies this week, they've been busy with both those major fires in, in the borough. And I'd just like to thank, uh, all the first responders for all they do for keeping our community safe, end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Holtenman?
I too would like to ditto, um, the last three gentlemen now regarding the fire departments. Um, but I would like to add that regarding just the structure fire that was at the recycle plant, that included fifteen engine companies, ten ladder companies, thirty-one tenders, nine special service units, three A O L, A O S ambulances, and using over one million gallons of water. So, I just wanna say thank you to all. Stole your thunder, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My, my next point is, um, I know it's a state road on Twenty-first Street North on Main Street, but there is a huge pothole between Twenty-third and Twenty-fourth Street, and my little Saturn is this far away from the ground, so every time I hit that hole, I think I'm gonna lose my front end. And it's very hard to stray away from that hole because of the uncommon traffic in the opposite direction.
Twenty-third, twenty-third.
Yes. So, um, if we could temporarily fill that hole at least until the state gets around to fixing it properly, I would appreciate it. And I wanna thank you, Mr. Bodnar, for being here and all your efforts in addressing the comments that were made tonight. I know, you know, you're in a predicament yourself, and I know that you're taking every safety measure that you can to make it safe for all of us here in the borough. Um, but I do encourage you too to update that in sign-in sheets so we can get more information regarding the members that were signed in and what they're using. End of my report.
Thank you.
Sorry for stealing your thunder.
Yeah, I should've handed you the paper and just let you get the.
It's worth repeating.
Is it, okay, Mr. Hall?
Okay, I'm gonna add to it, but I'm gonna leave you go, uh, one, let's start with, uh, the Public Works, I have to thank, I left this morning, it was really just starting to come down, they did a wonderful job, because I came over to work everything with off the roads, uh, as well as the previous one, and bang, they're like, they, uh, Mr. Glassick said, there's more on their way, just keep, uh, I'm sure they'll keep doing a good job. For the Fire Department, I'd like to, um, accept all the thanks, uh, as a member of the Fire Department, as well as to thank them, they put in numerous hours, I know she's gonna put, put in some of the thing, but just to reiterate one, one point, we had tankers in from as far as, one of them was, came from Long Bond, it's up at the racetrack. So, when you start calling for the amount of tankers that she's gonna, she's gonna talk about, when you're calling for the water supply that you need and it's not there on that site, we've always known that was a problem, that you can't pump that much water, and then we screwed up with school traffic because where we were pulling it from, you know, so. I think everybody did a good job, I wanna make sure everybody out there from the Fire Department and EMS and everybody else who was out there knows our thanks and everything else. Uh, we just kept, it was a long day, I was going out to work five o'clock and my truck. Uh, we just kept, it was a long day. I was going out to work five o'clock and my truck, my, my truck was, my car was running, and I turned that one off and went to the other one, I heard what it was, and I went home at, I went home at ten thirty that night, after being out at five thirty in the morning, and they were still there, and then they went out the next morning, and they went out last night, and they came home at midnight, and they also were out this morning again. There's just spots in there that they just can't get, maybe the snow will help. So, um, other than that, um, I see the decorations are up for Valentine's. Town always looks good when they get their decorations up. Everybody talks about, you know, the lighting and stuff in there. Uh, and that's all I got on the report.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
Yeah, Mr. Alderman, you've done it. I'm too, uh, I, I'm also gonna thank North Hampton Fire Department, local, uh, departments, um, a lot of, a lot of long hours. Uh, councilman said, um, also wanted to thank the residents, we, we too share your, uh, your concern and, and, uh, care about safety. Thank you for, Mr. Bodnar, for coming in, uh, tonight and answering all those questions. I think it actually probably alleviated some, some concerns that there's something going on. Um, you know, corrective actions are remade and, and you're open to making more corrective actions, so I appreciate that. Uh, Public Works did a great job. Um, we, do any more research about the brine? I'm not sure how much of a difference that would make. I know there was, uh,
At one point, they looked into it, I don't know what the results, where, but we can look into it again. At that time, I don't think it was.
Nabreing, towns had it. I'm not sure how much of a difference it actually made this morning, honestly.
If I'm not mistaken, I think when they looked into it a few years ago, it wasn't really cost-effective for us to do it in the town here, but it's something we could look into it.
Research it.
Yeah.
All right, um. Could do something else, but it's an antiquity.
I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman.
Mightn't really wrap up here tonight. Um, so I, I, again, I'm obviously just going to say what everybody else said, uh, you know, can't even hear you say you think you made a mistake. I don't see how you could even fault anybody over their simple little things like that, wh- when you're working under the pressure that you guys must have been under and in the quick responses you have to give. I don't think it's a mistake, it's just a, a learning curve, so, yeah, they, they have my utmost respect and my thanks. I, I didn't, I slept through the fire, which was, the, the firehouse fire, which is shockingly close to my home, so, um, you, you obviously did it in silence too, so thank you for that. Um, and to everyone that showed up and all the mutual aid, uh, you know, that, again, it, it's, it's been interesting sitting up here on council and, and learning some of these words. And mutual aid is obviously something we need to respect. I know we provide a lot of mutual aid to surrounding communities, but to, to get it back uh, to the extent that we did, uh, they certainly have our thanks too and, and all our guys. And I too, you know, Public Works is out there, you see the kids out there, the guys out there in the trucks and still managing to keep everything else safe in our town too. Um, I know it's not, uh, us and Water Party, but I know they're out a lot, they've had some water main breaks, so it's really been, uh, now the weather's taking a toll, I think, on, on, on everyone. Um, and last too, I, I'd like to, you know, also say thank you for everyone having come out, um, both from the, uh, Jeffrey Lane and Frank Drive and, and Twenty-seventh Street, um, and expressing their concerns. And I, I, I hope they do believe that everyone here on council does certainly care and does not want to see anything happen, and, and hopefully we all can work together. And I also thank you to Tri-Borough, Mr. Bodnar, and, uh, coming in and, and, and sharing what he's, what he's done. Um, I think that, uh, our, I hope we all can work together and, and, and find, um, some solutions. Sadly, it continues to strike me that this is not, I mean, I don't know, I don't shoot guns, um, but, uh, it just seems that this is somebody breaking the law, more so than somebody that's, uh, down there just shooting at the, uh, at the gun range, and, uh, so that's the sad part, and hopefully we can catch people that choose not to follow the laws and the rules of our society, of our community. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, unfortunately, I want to start on a, a sad note tonight. Uh, one of our very selfless community members, Marty Fella, ha- has passed away. And if you're familiar with the Fella family, they've been the cornerstone of the business community for years at Fourteenth and Main, Fifteenth and Main, excuse me. Um, Marty has been a, a selfless volunteer for the Chamber of Commerce, for the Exchange Club, and on many other levels throughout this town. Uh, he will certainly be missed. Uh, I've learned a lot of photography tips and pointers from Marty through the years, and, uh, he has always been Northampton first person with his, again, his selfless personality and all that he's done for Northampton. So Marty, you will be missed. Rest in peace. Impressive and thankful for the showing of the fire a few days back, that we have fifty-six trucks that show up from three counties helping us out here.
That is my report.
And that, you can, you can correct my math, but anyway.
You don't go first, right?
Yeah, see, that's why you go first. But anyway, uh, it, it's great to know that we can receive the benefit of three counties of participation, as well as be a part of the mutual aid to them if it ever comes to pass, which we hope it doesn't. Uh, this is one of the largest buildings we have in the borough square footage-wise, so, uh, I, I hope we don't go down this road again, but I want to thank Chief Knoblock and Incident Commander Andrew Marzen for leading the pack on this and, uh, taking care of everything I had to be taking care of organizationally.
Yeah, you can read that.
That's all I have to say.
You still say the same thing.
That aside, uh, again, thanks to everyone from, uh, Jeffrey Lane and neighborhood to come down today. And reiterate again what we've been working on for a while, uh, with the police department, and, and Chris, to walk into the mouth of the lion as you did, uh, it takes a lot of courage, but, you know, you're standing on a good foundation because you've been very open to participating and to making this work. Uh, Tri-Borough has not shrugged from any of the responsibilities in this, and I know that, uh, from what I've experienced and the chief's experience, that they are open to making sure this gets taken care of yesterday, so, uh, we're comfortable with that relationship and we're gonna make it work. So, outside of that, uh, town's doing fine. We, bad weather's come on the way, but, uh, we live in an area where we shouldn't be expecting this, and, uh, the great work that Public Works is doing just to keep us safe and, uh, happy. Take care of your sidewalks, please. Ice melt, shoveling, it's important. You might not think so, but there's somebody, uh, depending on you in town to get through that sidewalk and make that happen, so. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Attorney Stewart.
I have nothing to add this evening, thank you.
Do you want to read my report?
I don't wanna steal your thunder.
You already did.
I'll teach you to go last.
Remind me next time to go ahead of the mayor.
Can I ask, uh, uh, one thing to the mayor's report just before, and it has nothing to do with that?
Oh, thank you, Kenny.
The shoveling on the, on the, on the bridge, uh, it never got done. I don't know who takes care of it. The bridge that they're gonna be taking down, cement bridge.
Yeah, cement.
Uh, there were people, and I frequent there once or twice to see what's going on on the project, it's a little slow right now. But my wife even notices this person pushing a shopping cart or whatever across the bridge, who, it never got, it should, snow, I don't know who's responsibility is. It was half and half, but it never got done the previous snow, and I would buy it today and it's still.
The borough has never done it before.
I, I, I didn't remember that, but it's something that we ought to discuss between the two.
State, is it a state bridge?
State bridge, okay. It's a state, yeah, someone comes out and, the borough has never done it, I know we have.
I, I didn't think so, but I just.
I know we do a lot of the Copley Bridge.
We have a service agreement with the county, right, for Copley Bridge?
The Copley, yeah.
Okay, it's my turn.
So, anyway, that's it.
We'll, uh, we can, we'll send the letter.
It's, it's, somebody ought to do it, I don't know.
I agree. We'll send, we can send a letter out.
Hey, hey, y'all, I really like it.
What did you recount, Jimmy?
Uh, Chief Knoblock talked to me today and asked me to do this, so I have to, whether you talk about it or not, because the chief asked me. I received the press release from Green Store Recycling Fire Incident, seven ninety-nine Smith Lane, Northampton Borough. I would like to share a brief synopsis to our residents tonight, a synopsis of the fire. The structure fire at the facility has been placed under control. It is a possibility still that spot fires are likely to continue to occur. But the most important statistic is no one was hurt, there were no injuries, and there were no fatalities. The operational period became, began February fourth, Tuesday, at five thirty-one A.M. And concluded at twelve thirty-eight P.M., Wednesday, February fifth. The operational time period was twenty-nine hours and seven minutes they battled that fire. Crews responded back to the fire scene Wednesday, February fifth, at seven fifty-five P.M. Units cleared at eleven fifty-nine. Operational time for that day, that time period was three hours. So, as you can see, three hours and fifty-four minutes, about thirty-three hours were spent on that fire. It was a large-scale incident requiring, requiring resources from the region. The following resources were used in fighting this fire. Fifteen engine companies, ten ladder companies, thirty-one tankers, nine special services units, three A.O.S. ambulances. They used a million gallons of water and were thankful to the Northampton Water Authority for, uh, helping us with that. The Northampton Fire Department would like to thank all of the mutual aid partners for their response to this high-profile incident. Three counties involved. Northampton County Fire Department, including P.A. Pennsylvania Water Rescue Drone Team, and that came out of Station Seventy-two, and Northampton County Emergency Management. Lehigh County Agencies to include Lehigh County Special Operation Team, which was Hazmat. Carbon County Aqua Schikola Fire Department from Lowington, Minsing Township. We are grateful for the following: our borough manager, Brian Wellsco, and the Public Works with procurement of resources in the early stages of the event. Our police department with assisting wherever they were needed. Fire police for their dedication and long hours of service. The management team from Waste Management for their cooperation and understanding during this event. We sincerely appreciate their technical knowledge of the facility and their efforts to help obtain supplies to keep this operation running smoothly. Media outlets that kept the public informed, WFMZ, Morning Call, Blue Ridge Cable TV, and Lehigh Valley News. Our Public Works Department has done an excellent job. This is something different. That was the end of that report. Um, but I'd like to move on, uh, with this, some other recognition. Uh, as you look around this borough building, our Public Works have done an excellent job remodeling our borough hall, and thank you all for caring, if you're part of Public Works, to make it nice. Our employees in the front office are working diligently, processing all these garbage bills. This is a new added task for them, and they're working hard. Thank you, Megan and Bernadette, for being dedicated employees. It's been a chaotic couple of weeks with a lot of added stress, with weather, fires, et cetera. And it's a happy day in the borough when all the departments come together as a team, recognizing that each employee, police officer, Public Works employee, are so valuable. We have an aw- awesome team in this borough, and they work together very well. And they're to be acknowledged. There's a lot of criticism that will come, and one of the things people have heard me say, it's not easy sitting here. You take, people don't wanna lead the way you wanna throw rocks. But they don't wanna lead, and every person who sits here is not doing it about the money, I'll tell you that for sure. So, I acknowledge this team, this borough team, council, mayor, our attorney. She works hard to keep us all in line. She's shooting me notes to shut my mouth. So I accept it, you know, hey. Thank you, borough. Thank you, borough team. Thank you, borough council. It showed the team effort with the fires this week, the last two weeks. Thank you for that. And that's the end of my report. Anybody else want to say a thing before, did I miss anything? Oh, I forgot Jerry.
And then Brian too.
And Brian. But it doesn't say that, you, you left it all.
I don't have too much more.
Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
I don't have too much other than what everybody has already said, but, um, last few weeks has been a lot going on. We've had a lot of fires, we have snow, we had ice. So thanks to the Public Works Department and the fire department, some of those guys do double duty on there, so they've been going from work, they go right to fire department, doing both duties. Um, it's, and even too, this past Tuesday with the one out here at the recycling place. My daughter got out of school that day, and she spent five-plus hours out there helping out, rolling hoes and do things like that. So she got her first real taste of something kind of, kind of big. Um, and I think there was, I, there was something else I wanted, I forget, there was one other thing I was gonna say.
Oh, you, that you had your tenth, that you had your tenth three-hundredth game in bowling?
Oh, I, that's a good one. That, that's a good one, but it wasn't that. I, I think I think, I remember what it was. I remember what it is now. Go Birds!
No Ravens fan.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. End of your report?
That's it.
Thank you.
Hey, how do you beat that?
Can we have a script from the record?
Is this for you coming up?
No, it is, it's, yeah.
Let's get the bills out of the way, you know what I mean?
Skip over Brian. He's not an Eagles fan. Um, yeah, he's not. Anyway, um, yes, thank you to all the emergency services. Um, like Jerry said, we, it is truly amazing to see the people in Public Works going to their job, then going to fight the fire, getting a few hours of sleep, going back, a few of them, and then going out to plow snow and ice in the middle of the night. Um, it's a testament to who they are as people, as they are employees, and their dedication to not only this town, but the people of this town. And, uh, big shout-out to Public Works too. I was talking with Andrew Marzen all last night. He was keeping me updated on the roads as things got worse throughout the evening, so a big shout-out to him and the rest of all of them who very little sleep, some of them going on today at noon because of just how exhausted they've been over these last few days. So I can't thank them enough as people of this town, but employees of this borough. Um, one thing, I actually have a few things, and I apologize. Um. One of those buried the Eagles, right? Nothing, nothing's better than that, Jerry. Um, one thing on the Board of Health, a shout-out to Jake Urisch, who did announce his retirement. Um, a longstanding member of the borough, both on council and as council president for years past, and on Board of Health. So a big congratulations to you for your time at the borough, and we, I speak for all of us here and the residents to say thank you. Truly thank you. Um, applications for swimming pool, we are starting to take them. Uh, we're gonna do things a little differently this year. Uh, we are gonna do interviews this year for all applicants at the pool. So, um, it would be a good opportunity for people to get their feet wet, or this could be potentially their first interview.
Ah, I should've you did there.
You know, it's funny, because that was actually unintentional, but we're gonna say it was intentional, but yeah, it was a good chance for people to get their feet wet, because this would be the first time to have, maybe the first interview.
Jump right in.
No, jump right in.
Head first.
Head first, take the slide. On the deep end. Um, so that will be coming when applications, we're gonna set a deadline, we'll announce that soon, and then after that, we're gonna schedule interviews. And that's for all positions, whether you've been here in the past or you are new. So for everyone. Um, but, thank you.
Summer employees also?
Yes, all summer employees, not just specific to the pool. Thank you. Um, and thank you going along, I should've said this earlier, but thank you to all the residents who did come here. Um, it does not go unnoted, and we appreciate all your time, and Mr. Bodnar and the representatives from Tri-Borough, thank you as well. Uh, like many of us have said, uh, you did kind of walk into something here, but to come here and give the reassurance, we greatly appreciated it. And I know that even if it wasn't stated by all of them here, the residents greatly appreciated it as well, so thank you. Um, we don't take anything lightly here, um, and we are going to communicate with everyone in a timely fashion, whether it be through council meetings or through postings that we will make ourselves, so, um, thank you. It is that time of the year already for, uh, the PSAB annual meeting. So for anyone that is interested, I know some people have already expressed their interest, um, say if you could get your applications in by the end of February. Um, I don't wanna run into the issue where, last year when we were making reservations for the hotel. Um, I don't wanna run into the issue where, last year when we were making reservations for the hotel, I had, we had a call because you couldn't even do the online reservations 'cause they were already booked. So, if we get it by the end of February, you can make those reservations at the beginning of March. Um, borough will cover council people, but anyone that would like to bring a spouse or someone else, um, obviously the borough will pay for it, and then you just reimburse the hundred and ninety dollars.
What are the dates?
Uh, it is June first to June fourth, um, Sunday to Wednesday, just like it has been in the past. But like I said, anyone, if any has any questions, feel free, give us a call or shoot us an email. Um, I'd love to see everyone attend, but I know that's not physically possible with jobs and stuff. But if you are able to, we'd love to have you. I know Jerry and I will be there. I know Mayor said he'll be going. Judy said he'd be going. I think Bonnie would be going, and then anyone else, we'd, uh, we'd love to have you come along. Other than that, I, I'm a Titans fan.
They're the complete opposite. This Sunday, so.
There's, uh, you know. I would have to Jersey. So, we are number one in something, so.
No, I have a question. I was not number one. I know it's before the time that we start thinking about this, but where are we at with the paving and talking about people that dug up our streets and didn't ever finish them? Are we, are we reaching out to them ahead of time?
Yeah, we're, we're in the period where paving's gonna be going. That's another thing, it's a good point, that, that Barrington Drive paving will, that bid will be happening soon.
Okay, because there's a lot of areas that are, are getting bad. We know that the weather's gonna take its toll. But before it gets to spring and stuff, we should be talking about it now and planning.
Agreed.
And then, Mr. Hall, you mentioned that there was no water out there, no fire hydrants?
Just the, uh, the system was put in like a long time ago. It's just some of the hydrants work, some of them don't. The, the pressure's just not good. It, it's far out and the lines are probably, I, I don't wanna say antiquated, but they probably are. Maybe something could be looked into that they should get reinforced lines out there, and it would be a cost of, I'm sure it's theirs, their plan, or whatever. I, I, I don't know what is exactly out there, but it's all the old Atlas stuff from years and years and years.
Wow, it's a shame that they didn't have that water.
So, I mean, there's hydrants that work, hydrants that don't work, and then it's just, there's not enough vol- there wasn't enough volume for the amount that we're pushing, so it was easier to tank it.
Okay.
And, and do what you had to do when you need that much water at that.
Thank you. We actually test our.
No, well, uh, uh, overstep, I don't know what exactly.
We test our fire.
Okay.
End of my report.
End of your report.
End of my report. Go Titans.
Now, get ready. I need approval to pay the bills. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve by Mrs. Almond.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Questions?
I'll make it quick.
Okay.
Um, the Frazier Advanced Information System, what's the advanced now? Now we're getting advanced systems from Frazier?
No, that, I think that's just their name.
It's advanced cost.
Fourteen hundred dollars, you know, so we must have some incredible copiers and things like that from there. Um, the Hendershit, Hendershot?
Yes.
Hendershit.
Garage door at the fire station.
I know that's a fire station, but is there a grant that we had that was approved?
They, so that, this was for a repair. So, incident occurred that where one of the panels on the garage door was damaged. So, they had to get a whole new door.
Okay.
I think it's under insurance.
It's under insurance, so. That cost will be, is, we already received a check from insurance.
Good, good. Okay, thank you. Um, I think that was it. Oh, no, the pumping station twenty-one, is that correct? I had the, and I had thirty-two thousand for it, and it's actually saying.
There's a couple. So, there's ones for the actual.
Eighty-seven thousand dollars?
Different, different companies. So, there's PSI and then G S Electric.
Is there any part of the M S four and the grants for any of this?
Not, not for that. This was all budgeted for. So, this, from what I received from Tom W D, should be the last payment for the Twenty First Street Pump Station.
Okay.
So, Mr. Glassick took my question. So, I, I noticed those, those are three quite large bills, but that, so again, that's paying our obligation for a finished project.
Correct. The last one I got earlier this week was final bill, or final invoice.
So, to note, we've, we were able to make those payments without taking out any loans.
Correct, that was all budgeted.
That's to our credit. We have that budgeted in here, so the Twenty First Street Pumping Station's completely upgraded.
Correct.
Um, and, and.
It's, it's still, they, the final bills are done. They just have to finish up a little work. Um, going out for bidding soon, since we're on the topic, is the Stewart Street Pump Station.
How about, and where are we at with the, um, now I always forget that.
We, the relining project. So, for that, we have all the stuff. It's just being reviewed by the, um, it's sent to, being sent to review by the grant.
By the grant.
So, anytime you are getting with the contract with the company, it has to be reviewed by the grant administrators.
So, but the grants, the grant has given, we have the money, it's just the review.
With the review of the agreement with the company.
And then again, that is depend upon weather, so that's gonna probably be a certain process.
That's a nine, well, a nine to eleven month process, so, depending on whether, I fully imagine into twenty twenty-six.
So, and then to clarify, so then the next part of the project is the Stewart Street Pumping Station, so we're now going down.
So, that, yeah, so for the upgrading of pump stations, Stewart Street is next. Different project though, for the relining.
Correct, correct. Two separate projects, but still part of the whole five-year process we have, but, okay.
Stewart Street won't finish this year either. Probably half, maybe a little less.
Okay. So, again, I'm gonna reiterate like I always do. At some point, I really would like to see a timeline again of this project going forward.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pay the bill. I need a motion to adjourn.
I've got motion.
Okay, I got motion. I heard Mr. Hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue, leaving adjourn.